Okay, folks, it is Tuesday, May the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six P M. We're in the council chambers in Platteville, Wisconsin, and I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. We'll start with roll call.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Yeah.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
And tonight, we start with consideration of the consent agenda. There are several items, the council minutes from April twenty-fifth, payment of bills, the financial reports for April, appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight I have two, but prior to doing that, I would remind people that the city keeps a very updated list of openings on the website. That there is a, an application on the website, that you can always call and ask, are there openings? Council members can suggest people, staff members can, can, can suggest people. If we had people who were interested, I could actually make sixteen appointments tonight. Because that's how many vacancies we have. In, but we don't have sixteen people to appoint. The first appointment I have tonight is for a five-year term ending May one, two thousand and twenty-eight, and that person is Nathan Manuel. And the second appointment I have tonight is an alternate to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending May one, two thousand and twenty-four, in just a year, and that is Gary Prohaska. And those are the only two out of the sixteen that we have appointments for. So again, I know that some of you, I think Lynn and maybe Kathy or Lynn and maybe Eileen at the time, were at the library soliciting people. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, if we can just clarify, the first appointment for Nathan Manuel was for which?
Which board? Yeah, did I, what did I say? Police and Fire Commission?
Thank you.
I hope I said Police and Fire Commission. Yeah, that's what I said. Okay, and then Garrett Prohaska for the alternate to the Historic Preservation. We also have licenses tonight, one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. We have several street closing permits, Fifth Street from Camp Street to Smith Park, east-west pathway crosswalk for the Platteville Inclusive Playground Grand Opening on Saturday, June the third, from eight A M. to three P M. This is submitted by the Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee. We have eighty South Bonson Street to the intersecting alley for the annual Juneteenth Celebration on Monday, June nineteenth, from three to six P M. by Our Spot Community. We have eighty South Bonson Street to the intersecting alley for the annual youth series Art on the Block on Saturday, July fifteenth, from one to six by Our Spot Community. And we have Irving Street from Park Place to North Bonson Street, North Bonson Street from Irving Street to Main Street, North Court Street from Irving Street to Main Street for the night farmers market on Saturday, July fifteenth, from two P M. to nine P M. by the Platteville Farmers Market. Those are the consent calendar for tonight.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda tonight?
I did have a comment to make.
All right, all right, we'll take it under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions.
That's about the appointments.
Okay.
Procedure. Okay. What do you want to do?
Right now?
Okay. My concern is a number of meetings, I never knew who was going to be appointed. So if, if, there are different possibilities, one, if you gave us a sheet of paper with the names on it, you know, as you come meeting, that's one possibility. Or you tell us now here this evening, you told us beforehand, so that's, that's my comment about that procedure.
There's a.
Because it says here, please indicate to the council president if you want, would prefer separate discussion and action, or if I want to talk about who's been appointed, appointed, then I don't know, I need to know who's being appointed, so that's my comment.
Okay, so if the council wants, I can make up a piece of paper that has who the appointments are. Okay, good. I used to do that, and then I kind of got away from that. Okay, citizens, other citizens' comments, Cindy Tang and Michael Walsh.
Evening. My name is Cindy Tang. I live at nine-nine-five Highbury Circle, and I'm president of the Platteville Main Street Program. And I'm here tonight to, and I'm pleased to announce that the Main Street Program has made an appointment of Michael Walsh as the new executive director of the organization. Michael brings a wealth of experience and passion to this important role and is excited to work with the Platteville community to promote economic development and enhance the downtown district. He has over twenty-five years' experience in customer service and management. He has a proven track record of success in driving growth and innovation. So as the new director of Main Street, he will be responsible for overseeing the organization's programs and initiatives, including marketing, business development, and community engagement. So I think Michael's up next to tell us what he's been doing.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. Cindy said, my name is Michael Walsh. I'm the new executive director for the Main Street Program. A little bit more background on me, I spent twenty years in the military. You want to say something to me, please come and say it, I'm ready for it, and that's exactly what I'm here for. Hopefully, we get to work with each one of you here shortly, some I already have had the pleasure to be able to do so. The rest of you, I'm sure we're going to have a great relationship going forward. A few of the things that we've got going on with the Main Street Project, my very first day, I got to travel to La Crosse and go to our Main Street Awards for Wisconsin. We got to see one of our own as the volunteer of the year, he was presented with that, that's a great benefit for Bob. We've had the pub crawl, we've had the walk down Main, we are starting again the monthly mingle, all of those are, have been a hit, exceeding expectations from last year, and even for what we figured we'd do this year. Music in the parks coming up in a couple of weeks. And again, we've exceeded expectations on that, sponsorship is up, it's the best sponsorship year we've had already. And a lot of that happened just in the last couple of months, so got a little bit of a late start with not having a director or somebody to oversee everything, but everybody on the team's pitched together and they've made it a success already before it's even started. Community Garden, another great hit, we've got a waiting list on that this year. So I'll be working with that to see if there's any chance of us being able to expand on what we already have and then open it up to more people. Senior photos are coming up, that should be within the next week or so, we're just waiting for the photos from the school. And we have a hundred and twenty students that we're going to plaster their pictures down Main Street. So I'll be hitting up all the businesses within the next week, see who would like to have pictures in their storefronts, and we'll get those out, make sure the parents know where they can find their children's photos at. The mural walk is coming up on the thirty-first, that's our fourth grade students that'll be doing the walks and seeing all the murals that we have on Main Street now, let alone, we're going to be adding to that this year as we do the fireman's mural. So that work is starting on that within the next week, and that should be finished before the end of summer, which is going to be a great addition to see down on Main Street. Other events we've got coming up, we're looking for people to lend a hand, so if anybody in this room would like to help us out, we take volunteers all the time, we appreciate your help. There, we'd like to be able to see maybe at some of our board meeting, or some of our meetings, committee meetings, show your head, and especially at the monthly mingle, it'd be a great time to be able to get to know some of the people down on Main Street, the business owners, and be able to put faces to names, so. I thank you all, I look great, I look forward to working with every one of you, thank you.
And Michael, do you live in Platteville?
I do live in Platteville, four thirty-five West Madison Street.
Thank you. Okay, that is all the green sheets I have, all the stuff that I have for citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. So we'll move into the reports. The reports in your package were packet were the Historic Preservation Commission minutes from March twenty-first, Ken?
No additions to those minutes.
The other reports were the water and sewer financial report for April, the airport financial report for April, and department progress reports. If we're done with that, then we'll move along to our first action item. So the first item for action on our agenda tonight is Resolution twenty-three oh seven, authorizing the issuance and sale of up to one point three one million, three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars in water and sewer system revenue bonds, series two thousand and twenty-three, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto, and approval of a related one point nine zero zero one six six financial assistance agreement. Howard?
Thank you. The Department of Natural Resources has approved a clean water fund loan with principal forgiveness for our wastewater treatment plant emergency generator upgrade. We need that upgrade, and D N R uses a clean water fund to provide low-interest loans and principal forgiveness, layman's terms, that means it's a grant. So our advisor, Ellers, has recommended the clean water fund loans because of low issuance costs, principal forgiveness, and lower than market rate interest rates. If we follow the, the procedures, then a portion of the loan will not be paid back. So the one point nine million dollars is eligible for clean water fund loan, and it is split into an actual loan amount of the one point three-three million over twenty years, with an interest rate of two point one four five percent, and a grant amount of a little over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Unlike bonds, these are not prepayable, but it's a very, they're significantly lower interest rate. We currently have an outstanding invoice of over a hundred and seventy thousand that could be reimbursed as soon as May twenty-fourth, if we do this. So staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay, questions about this resolution authorizing a loan and principal forgiveness from the Clean Water Fund? Questions, then do I have action?
I have one question.
Okay.
This generator, is this generator more efficient than what we've had in the past? In other words, like a new car, new?
The generator will be more efficient because of the, the way the technology has progressed. We also have variable frequency drives in many of our items so that, so that it's not a hard start as, as a lot of people have, have shown. But it will be a larger generator because right now, like I said, forty years ago, they only did enough, they only powered enough to basically move the wastewater through the system, but not all of the treatment processes. This one will include all the treatment processes, so it will in fact be larger than, than the old one. It will sit outside, the old one, the current one, is inside the building.
So I believe it was asked last time that, what is the power for the generator, is it going to be gas?
I believe it's a diesel.
Diesel? Diesel tank?
I, I would have to double check, I can't remember whether it's diesel or natural gas right off the top of my head.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Todd, you had a motion?
A motion, move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero seven, authorizing the issuance and sale of up to one million, three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars water and sewer system revenue bonds, series two thousand and twenty-three, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto, and approval of related one million, nine hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars financial assistance agreement.
I can do the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Todd and a second by Jason. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second item on our agenda tonight is the D N R resolutions for D N R trail grants. Howard?
Yes, thank you. D N R replaced a requirement for resolutions of support with a form that takes the place of those previous resolutions. For the grant cycle that was submitted by May first, the city is requesting D N R grants to match the D O T grants that we applied for earlier this year. We broke up our trail request into four phases. The first three phases match with the, with the D N R's grant cycle, so that's, those are the ones that we're requesting. Phase one is from the current Roundtree Branch Trail near the bridge behind J and N Stone. It continues north on the gravel trail to Mitchell Hollow Road. Phase two is Mitchell Hollow to Broadway County B, except for the footbridge. Phase three is from Broadway County B to Fairfield Drive, north of the high school. Phase four, which would be requested in next year's grant, is for the footbridge itself. So each of these phases would convert the existing gravel to a paved and lit trail, just like the Roundtree Branch Trail. We talked about, since the funding sources are different for this grant, snowmobiles can still use the trail as long as there's snow to minimize damage. Because we're making three requests, we need three separate resolutions. So we're requesting that you approve the three resolutions, twenty-three dash oh eight, oh nine, and ten.
Okay, questions on these resolutions, which are applying to the D N R for matching funds, which would match grant funding that has been requested from the Department of Transportation? So it's the Department of Transportation, I think we approved those last time, or the time before, and this is the D N R.
Actually, there was, those resolutions are coming up under information, but yes.
I guess the same, the same question I had the last time this came up, is can we afford this? In its totality?
That's, that's a funding question.
Yeah, so I can take a stab at that. So essentially, we fund our C I P, other than street reconstruction that we usually borrow for, and very large projects such as the fire station. Generally, we fund our C I P spending through a combination of tax levy, so levy dollars coming from property taxes, and reserves. And the reserves are contingent on having excess capacity in our reserves to be able to use. We have had reserves over the past several years to help fund our C I P. By, if, if we were awarded all of these grants and on both the D O T side and the D N R side, and we accepted those grants, then the city would be obligated for ninety thousand in two thousand and twenty-four, correct? Yeah, so we would be expending, we would have committed to ninety thousand dollars out of that total of seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars of regular C I P spending. So about ten percent of our total C I P budget for two thousand and twenty-four will have already been committed to these projects.
Okay. I'm looking at the big spreadsheet page. So I'm trying to figure this out, so total city cost? Ninety thousand plus fifty thousand for phase four, then we look at the next one, it's going to be going back, it's ninety thousand plus a hundred thousand. And then the next one, looking for that one, it's sixty, sixty, sixty. I agree that, where's the money coming from? And was, I think, a comment? To fund this sort of, this project. But otherwise, I'm, I'm more concerned about funding roads in the city than funding.
That's, that's a value judgment, yes.
So Howard, your spreadsheet, the first section, the top section gives if D O T and D N R grants are awarded.
Correct.
And what's the city's share?
That's correct.
And I think that we are pretty aware that if we don't get both, that it becomes very difficult for us to do these.
Correct.
Because in the second chart, then it's, if you only get the D O T grant, and in the third one, it's if you only get the D N R grant, and it's pretty obvious that the city's share goes up considerably if you don't get, so I think the point of applying for both grants is hopefully, and that, that has happened before, we've gotten both grants, and then our portion is this, basically, it's the design cost, right? The D N R design cost that we have to pay?
Half of the, half of the design.
It's half of the design cost. So you can't, you can't get the full design cost reimbursed, you can only apply for half of the design cost. So if we, if, and they're only submitting one, two, and three now, so the whole line for phase four isn't even on the table, is that correct, Howard?
We had to submit it for the D O T grant because of their timing, but we don't submit it until next year for the D N R grant, so.
Because the timings don't.
Because the timing.
The timings don't align on these grants in terms of the due dates. So that, that's what we would be looking.
So we're applying for these grants, we'll still have yet another choice if we don't receive one or either. Break another decision, okay?
Correct. Right.
But we know this much, if we don't apply for them, we won't get them. And if we do, we might, or not.
Just clarification, Nicola, so the ninety thousand dollars, that would be the city's responsibility if all three projects are funded by the, both the D O T and the D N R?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it'd be a lot higher than that if we didn't get one set of grants, and I also believe, Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, that if both grants were awarded by both D O T and the D N R for all three phases, the city could still accept one phase perhaps, and not the other two. So there's, there's some different flexibilities in here if we were to receive the grants.
Correct, we can accept one or all three.
Two.
Three. Yes.
And I, I want to bring this up again, just for reassurance. By applying for these, if we get the D O T, we do not get D N R, does that put us in a bad light with the D N R or the D O T? If we apply, I mean, is it common that these are submitted together?
It's common that they're submitted jointly. In the, in the grant request packages, there's a, there's a line in there that, that basically says, are you applying for other grants, and, and what are you applying for? So that hopefully, the D O T and the D N R work together. I'm not guaranteeing it, I'm not holding my breath, but they, they do see that and, and try to coordinate as much as they can.
Okay, any other questions on this? Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion to approve, and I think we can probably approve Resolutions twenty-three oh eight, twenty-three oh nine, and twenty-three ten together because they're just, it's basically a form that they've filled out. And the form is the same, except the description of the of the grant.
Just the phase, the, the phase number.
Yeah.
With a motion, so accept it. Move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero eight, D N R Trail Grant Phase One, Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine, D N R Trail Grant Phase Two, and Resolution twenty-three dash ten, D N R Grant, Trail rather, Grant Phase Three.
Again.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd and a second by Jason to approve these three resolutions. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to the preliminary findings from the pool system, water tightness evaluation, and operating repairs required. Budget amendment number three. Bob?
Thank you. I hope all the council members had a chance to review, wasn't closing the documents. On April eleventh, council approved appropriations for the proposed Burbach Rico for the water integrity testing at our pool. Contractors promptly began the work laid out in the proposal, and this work has yielded several findings and identification of repairs needed. Some of these repairs are needed to be able to even complete the integrity testing, and are also deemed necessary to even open the pool for the current season. These repairs are laid out in the attachment, we're calling operation repairs from Rico. I met with Burbach and Rico last Wednesday, and I met with them as well this morning to go over the work done today and discuss operations needed. If these operations were authorized, and I asked them what would be the timeline, and what would be the chances, the probability that we open on June sixth? They both responded, it would take approximately two weeks. And now that it's May, time is of the essence. Discussion was further had possibilities that these repairs were completed, approved, and, and testing the evaluation process, if we could do that after the season? And both of them, they agreed they could do that. They also confirmed they would not cost more for the evaluation proposal that was previously submitted. And they also believed that the pool would open on time, and there would be a reduced rate of usage for this season. Now, to be clear, it's not known what the amount would be until the complete evaluation is done, as these are just minimum repairs. And until the total water tightness test is completed, all issues will not be identified. These timelines for the repairs and holding off on the other further evaluation until fall would mean these repairs could be completed. The pool could be filled, we could monitor it yet this spring for a week and determine if there is significant water loss, or if it's acceptable. And then we could open on the original scheduled date of June sixth. The budget fiscal impact, we do have some swim team revenue still available of ten thousand. Nicola can speak to the ARPA funds more to be used. And of course, staff is requesting approval for the council to spend the thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and hire Rico to complete these operation repairs as proposed.
Okay, questions?
I have a question here too.
Ken?
The budget, remaining fund from unspent designation, how much is that, you know?
We don't know at this, at this time.
I don't?
We, we don't know at this point. We believe that there will be, we're hoping that there will be some ARPA funds left unspent after we complete all the projects, but many of the projects are yet to be completed. So we're waiting for those projects to wrap up, and then we'll be able to make a solid determination of, of what ARPA funds may be still available. But I'm optimistic at this point that there will be some, we just don't know how much.
Number three, undesignated general fund balance, how much is that?
If you're asking how much is the total undesigned fund balance, it'll take me a minute, but I can pull that up.
That could be used for this project.
Which could be used for this project, yeah. So it's essentially approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. My, between that and about a million one right now, I'd have to double check that to get an exact number. That's based on the draft financials. Double check that to get an exact number. That's based on the draft financials. Issued by the auditors. Those are not finalized yet, so that number is subject to change. Um but of course of that, uh you know, we typically are very cautious about spending it and we usually. Included in our financial plans for funding our CIP spending or part of our CIP spending. Um however, there is enough there that um if we need to use ten or twenty thousand of it to help support this project. We would not drain our resources.
So the if I can comment on to that, so the. The 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 vision we would have in place that you'd be approving for us tonight in combinations with these would of course to be to then draw from ARPA funds that are. Undesignated, the next option then is to draw then up to ten thousand for swimming. And then the uh the unassigned or undesigned general fund balance then cleans up whatever might remain then from that cost.
So that those are presented in um priority order or or use order, however you want to say it.
Well, the pictures were certainly pretty telling. It's pretty understandable how there's water being lost.
Could you explain the pictures?
Sure, absolutely.
Who I don't look at pools every day and.
No.
Underwater.
Yeah, so if you look at uh the number one, page one. So what you're looking at there, the the overflow gutters, they call them, um. So that's actually the intake. So after the system goes through its cycle. You can see that the water should be going down those pipes. And then up the smaller pipes if on the left-hand side, then back into the pool, so it's recirculating. Okay, so because those pipes were broken in so many spots, there was no uh actual recirculation. Done properly. So what we kept doing was we kept treating fresh water. We would never be able to treat, you know, the recirculate, which is what the pool system, which is another reason we kept using so much water. Because it's supposed to be able to recirculate and uh and it should be treated. So it would save even money on our our treatment, our chemicals. Um so that's the first picture and that. Page number two.
What's the composition of those pipes?
They're schedule eighty, they're they're PVC pipe.
PVC pipe?
Yes.
Not not any metal?
No, no metal. And part the bigger issue is not the pipe itself. It was the hangers. The hangers were hanging from the wall that would hold those pipes. And uh I got I got a photo of what the hangers would. Show that of what the hands. Hangar itself now would be under. Because the hangers could not hold the weight of the water itself. So over time, they just broke. And the third diagram, uh the page three, you can see the diagram.
Yeah.
And number three, and it shows the shop. And see those little green uh marks at the bottom? Those are actually the return drains that are in the deep end. Well, we do know those have integrity issues. The testing that we could do, there are leaks in those. So this operation proposal, which kind of surprised me, would reline them and that's in that in that cost. Uh we know there's at least one two-inch hole in the very far west drain pipe. So already, we know we're going to be uh saving a considerable amount of water just by relining that. And then probably a a a. A more safety concern issue is the next page, number four. See that corner wall, those orange? That corner wall uh was actually supposed to be like many parts of the pool itself, the cement is. Free-floating, that corner wall was supposed to be free-floating as well. Well, approximately ten to fifteen years ago. When they fixed the corner, they adhered it so it was solid, so it would not independently float. Like it was supposed to. So what they're going to do in in this proposal is they will saw off that so and then. Uh put a joint in there that allows that corner to float. So those are the the four big repairs that'll happen with this operations repairs proposal.
Okay, so Bob, if I understand this right, we authorize money, they do the operations, but then. We test the pool and see if we can open at the sixth of June as we had anticipated. And then they return to the contract for integrity and pressure testing at the close of the season.
That is correct. And they said that absolutely they could do it, they would hold open our evaluation.
Okay.
Wouldn't be anymore. And actually, it's it's probably a little easier on them because then. Uh they could put the divers in, we won't empty the pool. Now we'll have to diet. Put the divers in, we'll have to drain it, we'll have to refill it, but we won't have to treat the water again. We'll just refill it to test it again. But the process would it would be uh more timely, actually.
So the this is an interim kind of fix, this thirty-seven or thirty-eight.
Right.
An operations.
And no matter what this fix, all these repairs would be required. So, yes, that would be part of the repair process regardless.
Okay, and I know that we did not have this on for information last time. And that we're going directly to action for it this time, and we have done that because of the timeliness of it. I mean, if we had it for information this time and then didn't take action until the twenty-third of May, then. We certainly wouldn't make the sixth of June for an opening. And Bob tells me that we have more people signed up for swimming lessons.
Four hundred, over four hundred.
Over four hundred, so we want to get our little swimmers in the water if at all possible, maybe our little and our big swimmers, who knows? So additional questions on this operational fix?
With this additional money, like what is the total then? Cause I know, didn't we set aside um? Some money already for just doing this the study?
Right, the evaluation was sixty-two.
Okay.
Thousand approximately.
So it'll be about a hundred grand.
Yes, and this will be repaired, so.
Okay.
Okay, any additional questions?
Kathy, uh. Bob, you said that uh cost savings of chemical, well, water. Between water and I'm assuming there'd be a cost savings in chemicals as well.
Correct.
And from what I remember, I don't know the number off the top of my head, it was considerable last season.
Yeah, we estimated uh and this doesn't include, you know, um the heat and the waste of. But it costs about almost thirty thousand dollars for the extra two million gallons that we have excess. That's just in chemicals. And of course, you know, we, the water department charges the parks department for the water. So I mean, that's how we were able to account for how much water we had used. So just those two numbers alone are that. So even if we cut down a million, you know, you're saving fifteen thousand dollars. Right away.
Hey, any additional questions? Otherwise, uh are we ready for a motion?
I was just gonna say, logistically, we can't really wait on doing this, right? This is not a, this is a, okay. That's where I'm going with it, like, this has to happen, plus to open it up.
Yeah, and and then also remember that, you know, this is their busy season too. You know, and they have committed to us to get this part done and open. And if we delay, they're on off to another project, you know, they're just as busy as everyone else.
What could you be being a delay with them, like?
They would not.
Happen, but.
They would, it would, yeah, they would get it done in that two-week timeframe. I they're still out there, ready, got stuff ready to go, so it it'll happen quickly.
I would move to approve staff to hire Regal Inc. to complete the repairs as outlined by the proposal for operation repairs. Dated April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three at a cost of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars. And authorize staff to fund operations by a combination of available ARPA funds. Swim team revenues not to exceed ten thousand dollars and general fund balance.
Again.
Hey, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Lynn to approve uh the money for this operation repairs. Uh process that's been outlined uh by Resha Rico. Uh Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh that's the end of our uh action agenda for tonight. Uh we now have information and discussion. First item on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Platteville to submit applications to the DOT. For the twenty-twenty-three safe transportation alternatives for rural schools, something called the Stars Award Cycle. Howard?
Yes, uh as we discussed before, this is the matching DOT grant. Um normally, they they allow, they would have allowed us to wait until. Later this summer to provide the uh to provide the resolutions, uh but. They called us up and said, we need them sooner, so uh we're asked, we're asking that you go ahead and do this. The DNR uh, I mean, the DOT grants have already been submitted. Um they've already accepted them and are in the process of scoring them and and everything. But they need this uh these resolutions. And I got agreement from them that uh they would be able to wait until. After the next council meeting uh to receive those.
Hey, questions on this? Otherwise, we'll move it to action for our uh May twenty-third meeting. Uh next on the agenda, ordinance of parking for the senior center. Howard?
Yes, um. We have the senior center getting ready downstairs. Um. And so there's the decision that uh they'll be here. Through uh Bob and Ally, they've determined nine to twenty, nine to twelve vehicles are parked at senior center. On a regular basis, we've identified uh eleven stalls closest, close to city hall. We're recommending ten stalls be designated for senior center use, nine AM to three PM. One stall be designated essentially twenty-four seven, uh that would be in our reserve parking. Lot, so it would match with the other reserved parking stalls. And then we have one stall that we're recommending to be a loading zone on Fourth Street right behind you. Um so that if we have the senior center van, a taxi, or anyone providing a ride to a senior. They can unload or unload directly uh there. So you see, we've got a map showing the proposed parking stalls. The the four stalls that are directly north of city hall. Next to the CenturyLink Brightspeed Building, uh we're. Most of the time, they're filled by city staff. We're looking at other options for city staff. Um there are three stalls in front of the police department that we're looking at. Most of the time, those are unfilled. We have the one stall on Fourth Street that is open to anyone. To use, and then we have three stalls. Two daytime parking and then the one twenty-four seven parking in the reserved parking lot area. Those three stalls will become uh vacant as of May thirty-first. So we're not kicking anybody out. There, we're just not going to renew their leases.
And the one twenty-four seven stall is for the senior center van, right?
That that's the intent, yes. Um staff would end up having to park elsewhere and allow the. Allow seniors to be in the actual senior. Parking.
Assume will this all take place?
If you approve it on the twenty-third, we will have the signs made and ready by June first. The senior center downstairs, we're hoping, will be ready on or about that day.
My recommendation is give them a good map.
Hey, any other questions? And then we'll move that to uh our action agenda for May twenty-third also. Uh that's the last action or information and discussion item, except for I put on your desk tonight. Uh and the information paper about local government day. Uh Platteville, uh the city of Platteville is a member of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Uh at the end of this month, on May twenty-third, uh the league is hosting a local government day. This is probably the most important legislative session. Uh in the last three decades, four decades. For cities and municipalities because there's a proposed change. In the amount of shared revenue we get. And if my memory is correct, we have gotten the same amount of shared revenue. About two-point-five million for the last twenty years. We use shared ra- I mean, it's it's like forty percent of our budget. Maybe a little bit more than forty percent of our budget. So getting another two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars. If we go back to remembering that every about forty to fifty thousand dollars is a percent on our tax rate. A three-hundred-thousand-dollar boost in our shared revenue could make a significant difference. Uh even if it has to be, I mean, uh and there have been some ideas about strings being attached to it, but one of them is. That you'd have to use it on roads. Well, I I don't, I don't think we'd have a problem. I don't think, I think Howard would see that big smile on his face, he's over there, I don't see the rest of it. But I see Howard smiling. Anyway, uh so very important, Kathy and I and Clint do intend to go. So there's at least three of us going. Uh Jason has indicated he has to work that day. He won't be able to go. Ken is not going to go. I haven't checked with Lynn and Todd yet. Todd, it appears he's got to work too, and so Lynn will see about your schedule if you want to go or not. In all i- in all likelihood, we will carpool. And we have done these in the past, and I was telling Clint today that we also try to kind of coordinate with local communities. That also go like Lancaster and Petosse and kind of present a united southwest Wisconsin front. In terms of what we're doing, so uh we'll be moving forward with that in the next um. Week. The other thing that I would announce tonight, and I should have done it uh during citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. Paul Erickson is here from the university tonight, and as we walked in, he reminded me that this weekend is graduation weekend. So we offer our congratulations to the students who are graduating, who have made Platteville uh their home and uh. Paul has also indicated that the graduation ceremonies, all of the ceremonies are on Saturday. So uh that might have been a change from previous years. Is it at the stadium or not? Okay, so it is in the field house. I know they went back to the stadium for a graduation. But they probably encountered some of the same challenges uh we encountered twenty-plus years ago, so uh. Graduation in the field house. Um other than that, uh we're done with the information and discussion portion of the gen- our agenda. We do have a. Closed session scheduled for tonight per Wisconsin statute nineteen-eight-five, parent one, parent A. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds. Or conduct- conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this is about fire station alternates. So if I could have a motion, we would go to closed session. I would also say, we do not intend to return to open session and take action. So we would adjourn directly from closed, from our closed session discussion. Motion? Go to closed session?
Again.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd and a second by Jason to go to closed section. Session for the statute I cited. Uh Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.